All right, we're going to call to order the March 5th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Agency, Successor Agency, and the West Sacramento Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight as we do each week with a pledge of allegiance, so we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by... My green light's on. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Mr. Jive Savage of the Sacramento River Cats. The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding the stone lock properties. No action was taken. That's going to bring us to Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our printed agenda, state law precludes the council from having a discussion or taking action on items that are brought up under 1A, but it's an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to speak to the council on 1A or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards. It's right next to the chief of police at the front door, and then turn the card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets the opportunity to be heard, and so to that end, all testimony is limited to three minutes under that timer. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, which indicates which item the council is currently considering. Recognizing for a lot of folks, speaking in public can create some anxiety, so we do ask that there not be any boos, or cat calls, or even applause, or other demonstrations, and we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. For the agenda items, we take the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report. Once the staff report's concluded, and the council questions, and the public testimony's begun, we don't take any additional speaking requests, so if you want to speak on item, be sure to submit the card before the conclusion of the staff report. All right, with that, we have a few requests under Item 1A. The first is by Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor William Lowell of West Sacramento, for the record. I noticed our neighbors across the river passed an ordinance calling for reduction in lawn sizes for various homes, and if we go that direction, I suggest we also, especially in the older neighborhoods back in the day where the homes were built around World War II, why, most homes were lucky to have one in the car, and nowadays, why, there might be four or five cars. So, I think we should encourage wider driveways, so get more cars off the street, but in a neater way, instead of just on a muddy front yard. And while we're pouring more new cement that way, we should take that opportunity to encourage greater wheelchair accessibility to that front door. And also, as we use less water to water the lawns, we're also using less water to water trees, so I think some effort should be taken to, how shall I say, more effectively deep-water the trees so that the tree roots don't tear up our sidewalks. So, and finally, over there at Country West Shopping Center on this end, on the north end, we still have that little section that originally had a no-parking fire lane red sign there, but it's gotten real dirty, and it needs to be repainted so that it stands out like the similar sign does in front of Rayleigh Supermarket. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. Daniel Sanchez?
Hi. I came because of God's love and concern for everyone in this room right now, and for many churchgoers, people who are spiritual, many pretty much understand what I'm saying. That's why I had to say this. It's not rehearsed. Quit your job, repent, and do God's love, or your entire whole organization is going to fall, starting with police officers, who should not suppress devils, because you know people are going to do what they're going to do. You're going to do whatever you want to do when you have money, you know, in Vegas, and I don't want to judge you for that. You want to get that sin out of your way, do it. You know what I mean? I'm not saying anarchy. I'm saying love, more like Switzerland, where you guys actually, you know, but instead, you guys symbolize yourselves in the UN and talk all these plaques about, you know, we're going to turn our guns to plows, and that's not happening. You work for a lie. You try to help people. Your intent is right, but you make money. Money's evil. Instead of giving people, if a bum's on your lawn sleeping, like I have been, and attest you for this, and you tell me to leave, you don't ask me to come in. This place is a wretched lie. And I'm just telling you, from a spiritual standpoint, you guys are effed if you don't do something soon, because they can only hold the button to their little toys that you guys have made. Eighty, ninety percent of the money is used for guns, so why have money? The funds you use for America, and most of it is for freaking arms. You shouldn't kill a person if he kills them. You should help him spiritually and medically, instead of putting him in prisons and using that for money, and using that to keep your propaganda. I'm telling you from the bottom of God's heart, and I am a wretched soul that He saved, and He's going to save you too. Resurrection means when you see the ethereal, when you see God, when you see all the colors that you've never seen before. You can't be like God. You can't be perfect with just love. Jesus said, "Just love." Just use love. If you don't use love, you have nothing. So, I just beg you, whatever you do in your life, do it for love. If you love your job because you love money, you love power, trust me, I know what power feels like, and it can corrupt. It feels good. So, do something meek that doesn't make money, because you guys have messed up the whole time. It's a bipartisan government. It's already a socialist government. It should be a socialist-loving government, where you can do what you want to do, instead of working and hating to come to work, and getting mad because someone cut you off. You should be freaking blessed you have a car. And that's all I can say. I'm sorry I get upset, but I just know that, deep down inside, I see smurfs, I see some people concerned. I just hope that you do it, because now you know, and you are blessed or cursed with responsibility, depending on what God does for you. I wish it's not like a curse. I don't want plagues to happen, but you already know what the Bible says. These people are not kidding. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Jeff Lyon?
Sir, please. All right, Mr. Lyon?
I'm speaking on behalf of the Washington Neighborhood Group. Here is an article from the Sacramento Bee on February 21st entitled, "Plasterville Cops Remove 14 Illegal Homeless Camps." The article explains how the city council members of Plasterville initially thought they could solve their homeless problems by coddling and welcoming the homeless to their city by allowing the homeless to camp in certain areas of the city. This is the same approach that Mayor Cabaldin is doing in West Sacramento, welcoming the homeless to camp along the riverfront in West Sacramento. Well, after just sixteen months, the Plasterville city leaders realized their huge mistake as their homeless welcome camps attracted a considerable number of criminals to their city, and subsequently, crime increased. So, Plasterville organized an outreach operation to afford help to the homeless that wanted help while removing all of the illegal homeless camps. During the operation, they found considerable amounts of trash, guns, weapons, and burglar tools. Plasterville no longer has a homeless problem. The Plasterville model for handling illegal camping is exactly what we proposed to this council last November, and it has now proven successful. It appears that Mayor Cabaldin is confused by the entire homeless issue, as he keeps saying it is not an easy issue, which really means he is avoiding making any decisions at all. The mayor just wants to continue with the status quo and allow the homeless to illegally camp in West Sacramento, attracting many more criminals to our city. Wake up, Mayor Cabaldin and the remaining city council members. Here is the proven success plan that will greatly improve the public safety in West Sacramento. Your failure to act on this issue is exactly why you will be voted out of office. What are you going to do now?
All right, I'm going to call in Rick Fowler, next.
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldin, council members. I'm here to introduce myself as the new executive director of United Christian Centers. I attended the first board meeting this morning and met a new board that is drawn from quite a bit of experience in the West Sacramento community, and want you to know that the new leadership of the organization and the new board of the organization is committed to serving the people of the neighborhood in West Sacramento in a way that cooperates fully with the city and with the West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation that we've had very productive discussions with over the past few days that I've been involved with the organization. By way of background, my public service experience includes a career in the Air Force, followed by some decades of volunteer work with nonprofits and boards, and working with chambers of commerce, and I've had the good fortune of working with the mayor and the city manager, at least by acquaintance, in organizations that we've mutually belonged to, whether chambers of commerce or American Leadership Forum. But I do want you to know that I'm deeply and genuinely committed to making better communities, and that that is our intention in West Sacramento. Though I live on the other side of the river, I will tell you that I've admired what you've done with this city over the past decades, that I've watched it grow, and I think you can be very proud of what you've accomplished here, and I'm very pleased to be associated with what I hope to see as a part of the solution to some of the challenges that you face in the community. So, anyway, I am very pleased to be a part of your community. We've worked in support of my organization that I've headed for seven years, the Community College Foundation, has helped tens of thousands of at-risk youth and foster youth throughout the state, including services in Yolo County through United Christian Centers. That's how we got acquainted with them. We work youth mental health issues in support of Yolo Family Services Agency. But anyway, we are very pleased to be here and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
All right, terrific. Thanks, Rick. You got a little bit of taste of some of the sound and fury of the debate in our community, Rick, but I think you'll find that there's a lot of collaborative folks in our community who just want to get something done. They don't always see the possibility of achieving the perfect, but want to take every good step possible to improve the situation, and we've had a lot of challenges. We continue to have a lot of challenges, but you should know that there are a lot of partners in the community that are ready to step up, including the city, as one of many, so, welcome. Thank you for coming, Rick. All right, that's going to bring us then to Item 1B, which is council communications and assignments. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mayor Pro temp Joe Hannison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Yellow County Housing Authority met on February 20th, and in addition to looking at the PG&E MASH program, which is the multiple-family affordable solar housing program, we also are looking into the implementation of more stringent water conservation rules. The New Hope Community Development Corporation also met. I would say voted in as the vice president of that, and on February 21st, I was able to take a trip to Portland with some folks from Sacramento. Doris Mansui sponsored it, basically, look at the streetcar system up there, and this was the second visit. I think I've been on it. We did one maybe three years ago. But this one was fairly unique. We had a lot of the movers and shakers in the development community accompanying us, along with Midtown Business Association people, and folks who really are going to be the investors in this type of system. We were met with Earl Blumenauer, who's a congressperson from Portland, who made a very passionate appeal or testimony to the success of the Portland streetcar system, and what it had been able to accomplish in different parts of town. A lot of pointed questions from the development community, basically, what's in it for us, and how much is it going to cost, I think are the main issues, but we have some commitments on the federal side, the state side, and the municipal sides to move forward with this, so it was a very well-attended trip.
I wasn't able to make the trip, and really appreciated that Mayor Pro temp Joe Hannison could represent the city on that trip, and the feedback was very positive from all the participants. And a couple days afterwards, I don't know if you had a chance to see it yet, David Taylor, the significant Sacramento developer, sent a letter to the city manager of Sacramento saying, "I went on the trip. I was excited about it. I finally get the project." And importantly, I ran all the numbers when I got back, based on what we heard in Portland and the formulas and assessments and all of that, and I ran it applying to my own properties and other significant ones in the downtown core of Sacramento, and it's a lot less than I thought, and it's totally doable, and I am 100% behind the project in being part of the local financing strategy. So, if that's the only outcome from that trip, that's a significant one, because he's a major landowner in the potential assessment area, but also, you know, very well-respected for his kind of no-nonsense business acumen in that respect, and so whatever you guys did on that trip was very effective in really building the kind of public-private partnership that's going to be necessary to bring that project to reality, so thank you. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. Just a brief update. We had a meeting of the Yolo Natural Heritage Program, JPA Board, last Tuesday, or, excuse me, a week ago Tuesday, the 25th, and it was a single item only, just to keep moving on the planning process. We selected a planning consultant and approved that contract, at least the framework of the contract, and the executive director will be moving on that. So, it was a special meeting, as we're trying to keep to our deadlines, so I just want to make sure the council was aware of that progress we're continuing to make on that board. So, that was the only item I had. Thank you. I did have a question, and it may come up in our later agenda item. It has to do with the Capitol Corridor Joint Powers Board, and I'm going to ask staff that we're going to have to... I'm still... This is one that's always confused me about who actually holds the seat on that. I know former council member Biegus held it, but I'm going to need clarification on the... Because I think it was a result of the Transportation District seat.
That's correct. The seat, according to legislation that was drafted, I think, by Mr. Tuttle when he was working in the Assembly for Mr. Hannigan, for Assemblymember Hannigan all those years ago, the Joint Powers Board for the Capitol Corridor, or 30, it's composed of representatives of the transportation districts and agencies along the route of the corridor, bar being the most significant one, but Yolo County Transportation District and SACRT are the others. So, the cities, we don't have direct appointments.
Okay.
So, the Yolo County Transportation District has two seats on that board, and it has traditionally, just as a matter of custom and practice, been one representative from Davis and one from West Sacramento, because we're the two cities that are on the line. But the actual appointment to that would be made by the YCTD board.
By the district, okay. All right. So, I know there's a board meeting coming up on the Transportation District that I plan on attending.
And they have also clarified, it's been clarified a few years ago, that alternate members of the YCTD board are also eligible to be appointed as the full member of the Capitol Corridor Board as well.
All right, okay.
Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, briefly, SAC Regional Sanitation met last week, and the main item discussed was the fee increase of $44 is going to be phased in over a number of years, and it seems like the first part of that is going to be $4 coming up in, I think we vote on it, March and April, and it starts in June. But we're continually looking for... Excuse me. We're continually looking for ways to reduce the $44 price tag that has been placed on this $2 billion reconfiguration of the plant. So, I think that if we can find some additional decreases, we should be able to decrease these rate increases and see if we can get things really sort of stabilized.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kristof. On Monday, I attended the meeting of the Board of Governors of the California Community Colleges. The board was considering a proposal by the chancellor to grant official state recognition to the West Sacramento campus of Sacramento City College. The way the process essentially works is colleges are allowed to open outreach centers on their own, but they don't get any special state funding for that purpose. When you get to a certain size, if there's also enough growth projection, then you're eligible to apply to become a state-recognized campus, and so I testified before the Board of Governors on Monday to urging them to do that. They did. They voted unanimously to make the West Sacramento campus an official state campus of the community college. It's still a center of Sacramento City College, but the significance of that is it unlocks $1.1 million a year from the state to support students at the campus, and also makes the campus eligible for future capital outlay expenditures, for renovations, and also for expansion. So, it was a pretty big deal, and it was particularly... I enjoyed the meeting, because the chancellor of the community college system is the, was the chancellor of Los Rios when we first envisioned that campus, and it really was his leadership that made that possible, because the Los Rios district was contemplating shutting down all community college classes in West Sacramento, because their enrollment was declining. And Bryce Harris, who was the new chancellor at Los Rios at the time, said, "No, no. Rather than shut it down, what we need to do is we need to go all in." The problem is that the college is not offering any complete programs, so people aren't enrolling because it doesn't lead to anything. There's just like a random Spanish class here, and a PE class there, and a philosophy class over there, but it doesn't total to anything. So, what we really need to do is open a full campus that has its own certificates and its own degrees and its own transfer programs, and it's been one of the fastest-growing, one of the most successful campuses in all of California, so it was a big win. I attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors' Winter Leadership Meeting in Phoenix, Arizona, a little over a week ago. A lot of topics covered, but a couple of the key ones I wanted to highlight. One is the President's Budget has just come out, includes a lot of good things for cities, particularly in the transportation side, also two areas of concern. One is a cut, proposed reduction in the CDBG budget. When we took up the CDBG item, I think we were all expecting that that's going to keep... There's going to be an annual attack on funding for CDBG. We're going to be living with that for the rest of our lives, but there's a small cut in the President's budget, and there's also a proposed cap of 28% on income tax deductions at all levels. One corollary impact of that is the impact on the municipal bond market, and so that's... There's been a series of proposals over the last couple of years that would affect the deductibility of interest on municipal bonds, which we're concerned about, and this one does so, but in a more indirect way, by capping the overall deduction, so that's one we're going to have to pay some significant attention to. The Conference of Mayors is going to be hosting, I think, the first-ever national summit of the mayors on inland and river ports in Little Rock, Arkansas, later this year, so we're going to help be one of the co-sponsors of that national policy discussion as well. All right, Item 1C is appointments to boards and commissions. We don't have any of those this evening. We're going to go to Item 2, which is presentations by the representatives of the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, on the US-50 WX construction project and the Sacramento River Viaduct and West End Viaduct construction projects. Mr. Lukin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, you will have two presentations on two Caltrans projects. One is the Fix 50 Project, which is a repair project from 18th to 24th Street Viaduct. Dennis Keaton with Caltrans will be performing that presentation for you. You'll also receive a presentation on the Sacramento West End Viaduct Project, which is a US-50 I-5 interchange project, including the Pioneer Bridge and off-ramps in West Sacramento, as well as other off-ramps surrounding that project, as well as a future project with Richards Boulevard and I-5. Those projects, at this point in time, are seeking to be combined together. At this point in time, Caltrans is in the process of melding the public outreach components of both programs, and so tonight, you're going to receive two separate presentations, but Caltrans, once they approve the viaduct project, they will be melding those outreach processes together. The last project, which you're not going to have a presentation on tonight, but which will affect this project, or which will affect regional traffic, and is a concern of staff, is a project to move beyond the lane construction on I-80 into a process to add an HOV lane project. That project, if done at the same time, could have a significant adverse effect on regional traffic in the region, and would not provide the pressure relief valve that we seek to have during this construction period for the other two projects. These projects, the two Fix 50 and Sacramento West End Viaduct projects have, will have a severe impact on West Sacramento. They will impact the freeways and all West Sacramento arterials due to cut-through traffic. They will impact residents going to and from work and their daily activities, and will potentially impact businesses selling goods, delivering goods, and receiving goods in West Sacramento. They will impact, it will impact regional items, such as regional mail service at the U.S. Postal Facility, UPS, and FedEx, and will impact goods moving in and out of our port. To date, the city manager's office has asked the Traffic Committee, which is an official advisory committee to the council, a staff-based advisory committee, to mobilize for this project and to act as a multidisciplinary committee, made up of public works, police, fire, and we've added staff from the city manager's office, Economic Development Division, Public Information Office, IT, and Yolo County Transit. On your dais tonight, it lists a preliminary list of items that that committee, which just has begun meeting over the last two weeks, has developed, and that we're going to be asking Caltrans and the city itself to look at potential implementation. I won't go through that list, but just to summarize into five areas, it includes resident outreach to try to reduce trips by using alternative transportation and other innovative methods to keep trips local. Business outreach, as an example, we are, the Chamber of Commerce is having a meeting on Tuesday at 8:30 a.m., excuse me, 8:30 a.m. in the Galleria, in which Caltrans will make a presentation similar to the one this evening, specifically to businesses. Obviously, traffic coordination activities, public safety implementation and notification, and also focusing on, as us as an employer, the city of West Sacramento, looking at alternative work schedules, telecommuting, and so forth. Our public safety coordination is critical to this project. The police department and fire departments are part of an incident action plan that's being implemented by the Sacramento and city of Sacramento. There's a map on your dais, which is just the beginning of an operational plan that is being created by the police department, locating or showing potential intersections that will have to be staffed by parking enforcement officers to direct traffic, as well as changeable message signs and detours. And then lastly, we're conducting a coordination, participating in a coordination process of transit districts, transit activities in the region. Tomorrow, a large group of transit providers will be meeting at Secog to discuss potential alternative routes and shuttle services between downtown and West Sacramento, and also including potential shuttle service for Rayleigh Field. With that, I'll conclude my presentation. We also have representatives of police and fire and other departments here, if we have any questions, at the conclusion of the presentation, but without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dennis Keaton with Caltrans to start the first project.
Thank you for having us do our presentation to you today. We're here tonight to talk about the project, which is known as the WX Viaduct Project, Fix50.com, and hopefully, we could shed some light on maybe some questions that are probably lingering that we can answer tonight, or hopefully, in the near future. On the agenda tonight, we're going to give a little bit of background on the project, the project need, project scope and schedule, as well as the public outreach that has gone into it so far, and what we intend to do during and after the project is completed. On the project background, the act... On the project background, the actual viaduct was built back in 1968. The WX Viaduct Bridge is a set of two elevated bridges that are approximately 2,500 square feet that are over the city of Sacramento. Its location is on US Highway 50 between 18th and 24th Streets. The freeway is locally known as WX Freeway System, originally named the Camellia City Viaduct for the neighborhood where it existed because of its original neighborhood beginnings from where it was built. The critical issues that I'd like to go over and what I'll cover during this presentation has to do with the heavy use and age that have caused extensive deck cracking, deteriorated joint seals, and the other critical issues that we're also encountering, non-standard shoulder widths, and the seismic retrofit that's needed underneath. The picture is a little bit unclear probably to the folks in the audience, but an example of the cracking, our structures and safety inspectors went out to the actual structure and took out a few core samples, which revealed that the actual surface cracks did in fact go through the deck. And that's what have, has gotten us to this point. The project scope, the planned improvements, which our engineers and the actual prime contractor, Myers &amp; Sons, intent is to put a four-inch microdeck overlay down on the existing deck. The shoulder widening includes new concrete barriers with new science structures and lighting. And the seismic retrofit is making those columns earthquake-proof. Some of the examples of what we're talking about, or I've just spoken about, the four-inch microdeck overlay as it exists today, as well as the joint seals, which are having some spacing in between. Those are derivatives that you feel when you're driving over that section. That has to be addressed. And speaking about the earthquake retrofitting, the column casings, this is what they look like today. The intention is to go ahead and have Myers &amp; Sons go in, and as you can see, the before picture versus the after picture. And basically supporting the actual, the actual columns to make them stronger, not, let me make this clear so that no one gets anything mixed up here. We're talking about the surface deck that's cracked. The actual structure is sound itself. There's nothing wrong with it. It's safe to travel on, so I just want to make that perfectly clear. Traffic impacts, the local impacts that we're expecting, obviously is Highway 50 will be shut down one side at a time, starting with the eastbound side. Two-way traffic will be redirected to the other side of the structure. So what you're going to have is 10 lanes condensed to five lanes for both east and westbound 50. I don't have to state the obvious, we expect major delays. The project schedule, the public outreach and education started as of January 23rd and will continue through August. Active closure dates on a 24/7 operation will be Stage One, the eastbound side, from May 2nd to 22nd. Stage Two, from May 28th to June 17th. These particular dates were chosen so that we would have a break-in-between to not interfere with the actual Memorial Day weekend, where there are festivities planned, such as the Jazz Festival in Old Sacramento, downtown area, as well as the Sacramento County Fair in the exposition area. More importantly, we also didn't want to interfere with the California State Fair that's planned in July, where we anticipated if the work has been done during that month, it would be probably more serious of, of a traffic delay than what we're projecting as now. Non-traffic interfering work started in January 15th. That's staging and scaffolding that's currently going on, as well as the work that's going to be done under the structure itself. And that will continue all the way through May and into the fall of this year. The expected completion is supposed to be the winter of 2014. Project detours and closures are as follows. We're talking about the main line as far as the freeway. And so what's going to happen, Stage One, as I stated earlier, is going to be for the eastbound side, so traffic's going to be moved over to the westbound side. We will be closing down the actual ramp, on-ramps at 10th and 16th Streets for the eastbound US Highway 50 side. We'll also be closing access to southbound 99 and eastbound Business 80, where traffic will be diverted, continue to be diverted on US 50 to 65th Street.
So you're going to close 99, the interchange there?
The ramp, sir.
The ramp, right.
Yes, sir, the access to the ramp. There's just not enough room to actually get the kind of equipment and the personnel up on there and work in a safe environment. Plus, after clearing the actual work zone, they're not going to be able to transition quickly off to that exit. It's just going to be an unsafe maneuver trying to push them back all the way to the far right after being on the left side. The other reason for the, the traffic actually being diverted all the way to 65th Street, at this point, from what our traffic operations section has found, is that those big 18-wheelers with the full loads can't maneuver at any other exit safely, other than that particular interchange. We obviously don't want to put anyone in inherent danger. We don't want anyone flipping over. So that's really the only interchange that's going to allow them to turn around and then come back on to westbound 50 to go ahead and come back on to eastbound Business 80 or southbound 99.
Westbound 50 is going to be pretty impacted. And now I'm going to have these big trucks and stuff try to make that U, make that U-turn and get back into where they need to go?
Yes, sir. What we've found is that we're going to, it's only, the only safest way that we could get these folks around without interfering. What we plan on doing is having, and we're not just pushing everyone on to that 65th Expressway, please. Folks are going to find their way on some of the surface streets and the earlier exits that are on the way to 65th. We're not forcing everyone to 65th, just the business trucks. We also take into account that we could use Hornet Drive as well. We're still waiting to hear back as far as whether the dimensions of that will accommodate the business traffic.
I'm sorry, can you go back to the previous slide? So during Stage One, you're going to close eastbound, I'm just trying to get my bearings straight here, you're going to eastbound 16th Street?
The off-ramps will be left open. The on-ramps will be closed.
The on-ramps, thank you.
Yes.
So that would be on-ramps going to eastbound?
Yes.
Okay.
And the same thing goes as far as the access and trying to get the vehicles over. What we're looking to also do is try to have as much portable message boards out to alert the traveling public. We've already had a campaign that's reached out to a number of areas. We have paid medias that's scheduled to go out within the next month to advise folks as far as, as far west as the Bay Area, as far east as Tahoe, as far north as Redding, and as far south as Fresno. So we're anticipating basically quite the incident that we had for the Fix I-5 boat section, if you remember back in 2008 when we had to shut down I-5. What we learned from that experience was that if we continue with the media blitz and reach out in advance and get as much information about this type of a closure, we should be successful. We're promoting folks to actually look into alternative modes of transportation, such as light rail, using the RT system, bus-car-pool system, maybe using an alternate schedule, depending on their place of business, if that allows them to do that, as well as telecommute.
So really, the best way to get from West Sacramento to Placerville is going to be to go to Business 80 and then cut across Watt or something like that to connect to 50 to go back up?
That may be the very, one of the ways, sir. We've talked, and we've actually got first responders that we've spoken to, who have already made their mind up, some that live in the foothills, that they're not even going to take 50. They've already made their decision that they're going to cut across at either Watt or one of the earlier exits and come across on 80 because they work off of Richards Boulevard.
Okay, okay, okay.
The Stage Two work that's planned, we're basically flipping it over to the other side from what we've already done for the eastbound side at those projected later dates. We're going to go ahead and do the same thing, the same type of work. We're going to divert the traffic over on to the eastbound side, both sides, on to the eastbound side. And we're going to shut down the access for Highway 99 on to westbound 50, as well as shut down the access for westbound Business 80 on to Highway 50. Stating the obvious, that's a real narrow pathway for a lot of traffic. We don't want to feed into where the bottleneck obviously is going to take place, which is right there. More importantly, the, the safety of being able to merge is also taken into account. And again, from the same detour that we plan on using, the folks will be directed over to access on to eastbound 50, all the way to the 65th Expressway, to switch it around, come back on westbound 50, where they can access either heading back on eastbound Business 80, or again, southbound, or I should say westbound, westbound US 50, if that's what they're choosing is. We understand that a lot of these folks are going to make their own decisions. We're not naive to that. We understand that the surface streets are going to take a big bulk of the traffic. In our meetings with the city of Sacramento at first responders, we're actually meeting with them weekly to try to develop a more concrete commute plan and alternative. We were initially going to try to, try to work something out for the surface streets, but were advised by the city of Sacramento that they were probably better equipped to handle those decisions because of not only jurisdictional issues, but because they have the inside information as to what streets would work and what streets may have current construction going on. So we obviously don't want to put bad information out there to the public and getting them into the wrong areas. On the public outreach campaign, fix50.com is a designated website for this particular project, where the public can go visit and get most of the information that I'm presenting to you here tonight. The project website's been up and running for the last three months. I spoke earlier about the paid media and the coverage that we're intending to do. What folks can do is sign up for Email Blast, which will give them the latest information on what changes will occur, if they're to happen, if there are additional delays. The real time on some of the commutes will be posted. Public open house meetings will be scheduled here within the next month at public libraries to also alert the public about what to expect. We have multilingual outreach, primarily Spanish-speaking. And then we have a section for Open for Business for smaller businesses, as well as social media, which is going to be a bigger tool this time around versus what we had in 2008 with the Fix I-5 project. We intend to reach more of a, of a younger generation using social media this time around, such as Facebook and Twitter. The Open for Business section that we intend to help promote some of the smaller businesses allows them, as a small business in the area, if they feel that they're being adversely affected, to go ahead and advertise their business on the website. They can also have a logo put on the website so that they advertise not only that their businesses are still open, but they're ready for anyone to come in and maybe get a discount as to the services that they normally receive. And all of that's free. So during the time from pre-construction, during construction, and then after construction, any business that is in, within the immediate area that feels that they're going to be adversely affected will have free Open for Business publication and advertisement on this website with no cost to them. Examples of what we have, we still, we have more than these two businesses, but these were the first two to sign up. They currently exist on the website. If you go to www.fix50.com, Open for Business, the business owner can go ahead and create it for themselves if they're having trouble. I would be the first point of contact so that I can basically help them through it. We've already got a number of questions that comes to the website about the public's concerns about what, what to do as far as their daily commute, what we expect will be average times. To be quite honest and frank, our traffic operations section figured out that the additional travel time, on average, depending on where that person is commuting from, will be an additional 60 minutes on top of what they already are experiencing traveling through this area. Following fix50.com, we, we hope folks will follow us on Facebook. We also have it set up for the Twitter account and the Instagram account. As stated, I'm the front person for this project, for anyone to contact if they have any questions or concerns. We also have Rod Murphy here with me tonight, who's a project manager, who's also available. And we are here to help.
One quick question, will the work be going on 24/7?
Yes, sir. It is 24/7 work. That's one of the reasons why we were able to make a decision on this, was that we gave these, a job like this, about 60 days total.
Right.
For completion. The prime contractor, Myers &amp; Son, basically said they can do it under that time. So being allotted the 24/7 work period, that's what we're hoping to accomplish.
Have you contacted the River Cats and allowed them time to contact their season ticket holders and things like that? Because this seems like this is going to affect them.
I couldn't agree with you more. I actually had a, a meeting with their general manager a couple of days ago.
Okay.
And we understand his concerns.
Okay, because, okay, thank you.
Well, just to, just to put a fine point, we share them, all right? So that, both in terms, I noted that there's been attention given to the state fair, to the county fair, to the Jazz Festival. The River Cats and, and the concerts and other events that are at Rayleigh Field are an equivalent importance, and in fact, more affected by this section, especially when we talked about the other projects that are happening simultaneously. So it's a very critical impact. It's not a single day or a single week, but this is right smack dab in a, in a critical part of the, the season. And there, there are, you know, to the extent we can create alternatives, that's positive in one sense, but you should also know that there, you know, the, the financing structure for the stadium and for the team is at least partly dependent on parking revenue. So if we simply convince everybody, "Don't drive to the River Cats game," that's good in a way. And that's where actually, that is our long-term objective, but no one planned financially for that to occur all at once, you know, all in 2014. And so in addition to the outreach and other, there's a direct financial impact on the, on the River Cats organization and on their, and, and the contributions that get made into the, into the bond. the, into the bond financing. So we have an interest in making sure that that, that, that gets solved. And it's a very, I mean, it's a serious issue for the, for the team and for that amenity for the whole region, but also it's just a basic business and, and infrastructure financing piece that we need to, we need to get a solution on in addition to outreach. Are we going to hear presentations on the other projects as well, or?
Yes.
Because I know there, you know, as before we, before we get to too many issues about our own circulation and that sort of thing, but if there are ones about the specific one...
I, I do.
Because it's going to get worse in a minute. Well, let's go ahead and go through this and I'll come back to it. All right. Yeah, you ain't heard nothing yet. We still got the Viaduct projects, right? So, all right, thank you.
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, my name is Rick Liptak with Doc and Engineering, and I've done a few things for you guys in the past. This is a third Caltrans project that I'm going to talk about, and as Mike said, there are three. There's the Interstate 80 project that's been going on for a while, there's the WX that Dennis just talked about, and then there's the, what we call the Viaducts project. And the, the, they're all three Caltrans projects. Caltrans has gone out and, and hired contractors to do these. The Interstate 80 contractor is C.C. Myers, Inc., and the other two projects, WX and the Viaducts project that I'm going to talk about are Myers &amp; Sons. Same man, two different companies. So he has got a new company, and that's, that's the company that's doing the two projects that Dennis and I are talking about tonight. The, the project that, the Viaducts project is a rehab project. We're not widening the road, we're not doing any, any improvements. All we're doing is, is sealing the deck and making some minor modifications, some drainage improvements, and some joint, the, all the joints, as you know, when you go over those bridges, there's a lot of banging that goes on when you cross them. Those are coming out, getting, and getting new joints. So that's what the project is. But you do have to work outside in the roadway. The first slide that I've got here is the I-5 portion. So this, this project is in two segments. It's the I-5 portion, and it's from the big fix that was just done a few years ago through downtown, parallel to the river there on I-5, and it goes from there to Richards Interchange. And it's the, it's, it's the, the bridge portion. The, it's the bridge decks that we're talking about rehabbing here. So that's, that's the first project. And then the second project that I'll show a slide in a second is the, is the US 50 portion, and you'll see the connection and the relationship between the WX and, and the Viaducts on 50. But what I want to make clear is there's two scenarios on how these, how this gets done. Our contract, as it's, as it sets right now, before Caltrans makes this, actually considers or approves this idea to combine the Highway 50 project, is to, the, the two scenarios are, the first scenario is if they don't, if they don't agree with that and they don't approve this combination, the I-5 portion will go first. So what will happen there is we'll, we overlay all the ramps and the bridges. So the idea is we will overlay the ramps, and all this work will be done at night or over a weekend, several weekends, actually. And the weekend starts late Friday night, and it, and it ends early Monday morning. And that gives the contractor about 55 hours worth of work, and they can get a whole lot done. At no time do we close the freeway. We're always going to have at least two lanes open, and that's why the weekend and night work, because the, the traffic demand is much less at that time, and we're able to shut the freeway down to just a couple of lanes and have, have nominal backups. As Dennis just talked about, the, the traffic during the day is going to be tough on, on the WX project, and there's no doubt about that. The, the traffic projections are all very clear about that. So on I-5, that, over, over two different week, the, the ramps will be a few different nights, and then over two, three-day, three work day weekends, starting Friday night late. And certainly, these, these would be coordinated with River Cats games. If there's a River Cats game, we're looking at the schedule and, and when they're in town, but we could certainly wait a few hours after the River Cats game is completed before we start work out there. Those are easily accommodated. Because this, that's especially important, it's going to be important on the, on the Highway 50 portion. So that's the I-5 project. And then on the 50 project, that is three weekends. If we, if we go with scenario one, which is not combining the projects, that will be over three different weekends, and, and that's for each direction. So if you've got westbound three weekends and eastbound three, three weekends. Again, working over the, over the weekend with two, down to, down to two lanes and nighttime down to two lanes. So the next, so, okay, yeah, that's, that's the Highway 50 portion. I'm not sure if you can see that or not, but it's all colored on there, means different things, but basically, if you look at that carefully, you see all those different colored ramps. That means the ramps are included in this work. So each of those would be individual nights of work, and you go out there, you start, you go from beginning to end, get that ramp done and over, over, over the night, and then open it back up. And there's many of those nights to get the ramps done and then, and then work on the main line. The idea of working on the ramps first is so that it just maximizes the amount of work you get done on the main line. If all the ramps are done and you just can work straightaway and down the middle of the freeway, your production would be much higher. So that's the idea there. There are some of the, the approach slabs, that's the end of the bridge, and I'll show you some photos at the end here, what that means. But that, what that does, any, any of these bridges that are, that the approach, the fill portion of the, of the road is settling lower than the, than the bridge. What they do is they put a large concrete slab out there, it's about 30 feet long, the width of the road, and it just gives a nice cushion between the, between the, the embankment portion and the bridge. So there's some of that work that'll be done as well. And as I said, all the joints get replaced, and the two over the, the Sacramento River Bridge are very substantial bumps, as, as you all know. Those are coming out and getting replaced with a nice, modern joint.
Before you leave this slide, is the, the southbound I-5 connector to westbound 50, the, the long ramp that connects it is notoriously backed up on River Cats nights, is, is that not colored in here? Is that not?
It is part of this.
It is required work, okay.
Yeah, the, Caltrans is, we, we meet with Caltrans quite often on this project. There, we've done a lot of traffic modeling, including the Interstate 80 project, the WS project, and this project, looking at all the different scenarios. Caltrans is very concerned about those, those ramps, as you can imagine, and, and we'll, we'll make sure that it's a, it's a, it's a workable solution when that's approved. So since it's, it's a design-build project, that's what makes it different than the other one. All this stuff goes on at the same time, and then all of a sudden, you start, you start building the project. So to add this into the WX project is a little bit of a, a little bit of a stretch. There's a lot of things, a lot of moving parts to pull off. But the idea came about in some of our meetings with some of the, this, city folks who've met with both West Sacramento and the City of Sacramento, and it was, it was actually the City of Sacramento that commented, that said that, you know, the public will never understand if you're out there working on the WX, and then some point later, it looks like it's all done, and then out comes this other construction project, just, you know, just a thousand feet away. So that's where that idea to combine these ideas came from, which is what I'll, I'll talk about now. The, the, the project that Dennis just described is, is basically 20 days of work in each direction. So as he just described clearly, you, they're, they're taking a whole side of a free, a whole direction of freeway and closing that, and then putting all the lanes on the other side, two lanes and three lanes, so that it, so that it can get traffic through there while having the entire area to work. And then, and then they switch it back as soon as that project is, is done. If we go to the next slide? Okay, these, these are the two slides that we have here, and the, what you want to be looking at here is on, is on the left side of that graphic is the, is the work that we're doing, and it's basically from the I-5 interchange all the way to Jefferson. So you see color on there, and you see color on each direction for the, the two stages. And the two stages match exactly, and this is the scenario if we combine the project. So this is the second scenario. But we, we work only on one side at a time by restricting the lanes to match what the WX is doing. So if, since the WX is down to two lanes, we would put, we would put over the river down to two lanes. But on the other side, there is nothing going on there. That traffic is unimpeded. So that's the only difference between our scenario, this, the scenario of this area and the WX. Yep, WX was closed on the one side, whereas this side was completely open except where we're working. So the, the sides in the eastbound and the westbound matches exactly the same as the WX. So what would happen is, is traffic is going to back up in, in approaching the, the work site, say on, on the westbound, traffic is going to back up way, way to the east. So the idea is that when you come through that, that two lanes at the WX, you would, what, what we're proposing, if we, if we add these two together, is you'd stay in those same, these same two lanes as you cross over the river, and then it, and then it opens back up after you're, after you're through. So that, that's the, that's the concept. And we've got a lot of work to do to prove to Caltrans that it's, it's just a very incremental change in the traffic. We have done our, our traffic work, it's been, it's been completed and submitted to Caltrans. Caltrans is currently reviewing it, and having lots of discussions on that to make sure that we've, we've thought of everything. But if that, if that concept doesn't, doesn't get approved, then we're going to be back to that first scenario where we're going to be doing all this at nights and weekends. And, and, you know, everyone, especially each of the cities, the, the River Cats and a lot of the folks that are very directly impacted by this, should weigh in on that and, and let their, let their feelings be known about it. Next slide, please. So just, just to clarify what we're doing is that we're not building anything, we're just going to put this brown overlay material. It's the same type of material they used out there on I-5 when they did the fix, parallel to the river out there a few years ago. But it's about three-quarter inches thick, comes out of a paver, and it looks about like that going down. Next. And these are the joints. That, that's what happens when you take a joint, you take, you jackhammer a lot of concrete out, you put a bunch of new rebar in, you do some welding, and you put, you put all that back in there, and then you pour the concrete back, and you end up with this nice, smooth joint. And that, that's a lot of construction going on. If it's done at night, you could imagine that you'd have to do it in segments, and a lot of, a lot of different nights would be involved. And that's why the combination idea helps certain of these things. This is an approach slab, is what I was describing. It's, you dig out the dirt that's there, you, you put rebar and concrete in there, and you pour it back, you end up with a, you know, a kind of a bridge extension out there in the embankment. And then the last one, a lot of the drains out here in this area are clogged, and the pipes are too small, so one of the things that we're doing is replacing all the, all the piping, fixing a lot of these drains, we're cleaning out all the drains, but they're going to all go into larger pipes, and it should help quite a bit. So that's what I intended to cover. Are there any questions about the Viaducts project?
Have you talked to the Highway Patrol as far as, are they going to be setting up a series of where they guide people through? Have these lead cars and guide people through?
We haven't, we haven't talked about that. We are going to have the CHP on-site, you know, when they're out there, and have that presence on it through the construction zones. We have, we have lots of that. But the guide cars, no, haven't, haven't talked about that.
Mr. Ledesma? Thank you. And I, I have questions for that kind of intermix between the two of you, but thanks for the presentation and bringing it to us. This is going to be very impactful. But one of the questions that you brought up earlier in the present, presentation was you're reaching out and talking to the local Sacramento side about the surface streets. And I, the part that, that I don't see on your, on your outreach is to schools, you know, or, you know, we, we tend to think about, you know, West Sac, and I look at the detour maps that are in West Sac, but just like Sacramento comes here for River Cats, we go there for Sac State University, or even, even though we have our own Sac City here, that some still go to there, or American River, wherever they go. So have we reached out to the schools that kind of draw commuters to make sure they're aware of the change? And the second question on, on kind of outreach, do we have, have we talked to the Yellow County Transit District, YCTD, about the impacts and any special programs during this time period?
Actually, council member, I've, we have reached out to Sacramento State. We're going to have additional presentations to them. We've, I've met personally with the transit concerns that the University of California-Davis has expressed. I've also sat down with UCD Med Center. Please keep in mind that we are aware that we're talking about the larger trauma unit in Northern California being at the center of this, as well as Sutter Hospital, Mercy General, and the other med clinics in the area. What it comes down to is that we've, we've reached out, we've actually sat and met with them. We have presentations planned, both at Sacramento State. We had a meeting over at Secog today where our intentions were to have booths at some of the actual physical locations in the quad areas over at Sacramento State to try to get the information out to the students. They're already doing this, once they had received the actual construction dates and times. And so the word has been getting out, and we're trying to actually do more in trying to promote the website to, so that folks can visit that on their spare time. What I'd also like to point out is that we, we, Caltrans is really sensitive to the fact of, after speaking with the GM for the River Cats about the dilemma that he has with trying to make sure that he doesn't lose any seats, we take that very seriously. We're looking into possibly adding some more advertisement regarding the games on the actual website, specifically on certain days that, once we work it out with the GM, that, that are special family days, designated family function days, that, that we want folks to actually show up. We don't want to keep anyone from enjoying their activities as an overall presence at, at a River Cats game, or for that matter, any other social function. But we have to do it in a responsible manner with safety and concern, and trying to get folks through that section without putting anyone in inherent danger.
Are you providing any, you or the city going to be providing any support to the River Cats or other businesses or organizations to provide maps or mapping alternative routes? And I'm thinking of the River Cats in terms of alternative routes, so they can give out the season ticket holders. You know, they may not have a, you know, I'm sure they, they have a graphic designer, but other businesses may not, about how to get safely into the city and trying to maximize the alternative routes versus not, you know, so, so they have some support and some coordination of that?
We have a, a traffic contingency plan that we're still working out with first responders as well as the City of Sacramento. When we have that hashed out, and we actually have a firm plan, we plan on doing that.
Okay.
But at this point, it's still too early to, to really decide what, what we're going to do. What we have heard from the City of Sacramento as far as the nearby surface streets is that W and X streets are planned to not have any parking whatsoever on them, so that any of the surface streets or any of the vehicles that are going to be filling up off of that particular section, they're also going to be able to put their signals on automation instead of sensors and control it from their comm center. The extra police on the streets, the extra CHP officers are going to be also patrolling, which we learned from the Fix I-5 job in 2008, assisted us by finding out hotspots or areas that needed to be addressed right then. And that's what was, what we plan on doing this time. The whole X factor that, in this particular project, which we found out in 2008, is the public. It's the predictability is not necessarily going to be there.
Right.
What we thought was going to be problem areas didn't necessarily materialize that way, and we're hoping we get a better grip on it this time around.
Well, and, and the one area that I'd ask in our staff and to begin working with you on is around, at least what we've historically seen, if there's impacts on I-5 North, because I think the project you're working on will impact the... Because I think the project you're working on will impact the, the ramp coming up, and then people try to avoid the WX if they have to get downtown. Is, there's a propensity, especially from folks in the southern part of Sacramento County, to come up, get off on Freeport, go, go loop around on the Clarksburg Bridge and just jump up Jefferson, thinking that's a, they can get up with a free ride. And, and, you know, we're going to be impacted. Already, if there's any traffic issues on, on Highway 50, the Jefferson ramp is just a mess, and it backs up all the way into South Port. And we're, we're doing our best to mitigate that with, in the future, but that's what I worry about, is the additional impacts coming from those coming from the south that may just see that as alternative route, so.
What, what we've been also been, have been told on the initial responder meetings with, with local jurisdiction, is that they would prefer if we start dispersing the traffic farther out from the actual construction zone. Meaning that if we're able to get more folks to start exiting as far back as Florin Road and using some of the surface streets to start controlling some of those signals, that'll be less of an impact right there from the interchange itself. That was another suggestion. We've been talking with a lot of folks. These actual traffic impacts are taken seriously. The first responder meetings are going to continue all the way through the project, prior, during, and after, so that everyone is on board. That's why we, we have, we, we heard what we, what we're expecting from the city of West Sacramento, from their last attendance, about what they were in favor of and what they aren't in favor of. And we're taking that very seriously.
Just to pick up on, on what Mr. Ledesma said, because they, the, I mean, I think the impacts here are going to be much larger than the boat section, at least for us. And that's, in, in, in large measure because there are almost an unlimited number of north-south alternatives, and there aren't east-west because of the river, right? So the ability, the outreach cannot be the, the 99% solution in this case, because there are limited options. No matter how much planning time you have, there are, there are far more limited options. That's not true if you're in the grid. If you live in the grid, or you need to go somewhere else in the grid, there's, there, I mean, the WX freeway is just one accelerated way to get through the grid. But for the rest of us, you know, getting, getting through is going to be a major challenge, and there aren't very many alternatives. And if everyone is using what are essentially boiled down to two alternatives, those two alternatives become massively congested. And because those two alternatives then connect to just a couple of north-south arterials on our side, it has, the, the effect rapidly spreads, the, the contagion spreads to the entire city. And you can't deal with it earlier because of the causeway, right? So there's, you can't encourage folks to exit earlier and find some other route. There's only Enterprise, Harbor, and Jefferson. Enterprise, Harbor, and Jefferson, all the alternatives converge on two other roads, right? The, through the Port Lake, Washington, back to Jefferson, or up to Sacramento Avenue on the north to get to the I Street Bridge, or back into Highway 80. And so the, the number of alternatives that are available, even if you're a savvy, well-planned, well-educated, well-informed person with ways on, ways on your smartphone, and you're following you on Twitter and Facebook, it, there's a limited number of options that you have, no matter how smart you are. And so we really do have to take additional actions that are expensive, you know, for, for us and for our partners in order to make this work. It can't, it will not solve, be solved simply by telling people, you need to plan, and it's going to be really bad. It's going to be really bad even if you plan. And some of those corollary impacts, we can't plan for. So if, if everyone has to cross over at the Tower Bridge and the I Street Bridge, which they, which in, in some cases they will, and to access those, they have to go on Jefferson, there's, there, we have no alternatives for where we send an ambulance or a fire truck. And we can't sit at the ambulance or fire truck and leave an hour early, right? That's, that's, that's immutable, right? That's not a matter of, of effective planning or outreach. The fire truck has to leave when you're having your heart attack, or when the building is on fire. And, and so, and so, and so put, it wouldn't be enough to simply put on the website, you know, please leave early, or please give us more notice of your heart attack. So we've got it, we have to take those issues on. I, I, I know we don't, and I'm sure Caltrans doesn't want to have, you know, actual fatalities that are occurring in our, in, on either side of the river, but, but, you know, certainly here, as a result of actions that we might have otherwise taken in order to solve that. So to me, it's extraordinarily serious that we, all the work that you're doing is important because the extent to which we can achieve what we did with the, with the boat section, or many of the Carmageddon's in Southern California and elsewhere in the state, where outreach is a very, very powerful tool, but there are things it cannot do. And this is definitely one of those, those situations. So we, we need, we need the tools and the resources in police, in fire, and public works. I don't know if we have the capacity in our public works, in our, in our signaling system to be able to manage centrally in the way that you're talking about in Sacramento. But if we, but we need that, we absolutely have to have that capacity. And there are some streets that we're going to have to, you know, close, you know, we've been talking about this, this little remnant of West Capitol Avenue, that should, that should get a green light like once a day, or, you know, because we're going to have so much other traffic going through it. But we don't have the ability to do that. That costs money, frankly, to, to be able to do that. And so we're going to, we will, we will need help in order to accomplish those kinds of small but really critical changes, so that we can maximize the likelihood that, I mean, Rivercats aside, because we've talked a lot about that tonight, I, I know you've gotten the message, and we'll keep on it, but, but I, actually, tonight I'm more concerned about the fire, the fire truck and the ambulance getting to where it needs to get, where they need to get in order to, to provide just the most basic of public safety, given the, the very limited number of our, of, of major arterials, or even surface street alternatives going in either direction in a small window of our city. The, the, one other issue is, because of the closure of the, of the connector between 50 and Southbound 99, I'm a little worried about the trucks. Well, actually, I'm very worried about it, because the, as, so a truck has the, will be encouraged to go to 65th and essentially turn around and come back. And that, I mean, that's, is a good and option, as you can deliver on the, on the engineering side. But for some trucks, it will seem attractive to simply get off at one of our exits and go down Jefferson and cross over at Freeport. And that is currently, you know, we have, we have the designated as a local truck route, but it's for the purposes of serving, you know, agricultural industrial users, not, not for serving thousands of truck trips per day. So that has the potential of being a significant problem. Another, but a related one is just this street out here, Tower Bridge Gateway, not, not right here, but a block over, that we also want to assure, it will, it will become a very attractive alternative if, to, to not have to go out to 65th. That's not a designated truck route. The Tower, you know, that street to the Tower Bridge and over the Capitol Mall is not. And so managing those sorts of situations so that they don't become major truck routes, or truck routes at all, is going to, again, that's going, that simply will require enforcement on, on our part, but I, we can't, we can't rededicate all of our officers just to doing that without some additional, without some additional support. So I think some of these, it, it's going to be a nightmare no matter what. You have to do it. Don't, don't get me wrong. I mean, we, we have to fix our streets and our roads, and everybody at home has to fix their, you know, their own, their, their shower hat once in a while. We all have to do maintenance, and it's all, is, it is all, in many cases, it's a significant hassle and inconvenience. So I, we, we get that. I get that, and want to make sure that you have all the support that you need to get the project done right and quickly. But simply to also say that as, as you're constructing, as you are putting together the resources in order to deliver the project, we need, we do need some help. Not massive help, but we need some help to be able to actually deal with the problems in addition to the outreach, so that, so that there are viable alternatives for folks, and so that we don't experience the worst of the impacts, and particularly so that we don't put people's lives at, in jeopardy because of, of actions that we might have otherwise taken to try to solve them.
Mr. Chrisoff?
Yeah, just to follow up just a, a little bit, and that is, have you talked to the Highway Patrol? Because they do have ELO services over there, and I'm thinking more of the EMT or the medical emergency that can get to the med center. I mean, so, I mean, I think that, you know, there, there may be some alternatives that haven't been all, explored all the way. But the other issue is, is with, if, especially if there's medical emergency or something as far as fire, we have these reciprocal agreements and things with all sides of the river. And if we can't get to them, what are we supposed to do? How do we, is there any, are there going to be any roads or any ingresses or egresses that are just designed to protect those fire emergencies, or those police emergencies, or the medical emergencies that, so, so that they can, you know, buzz on through and, and not get stuck up in traffic?
Councilman, we've actually talked about this with, and again, I'm not trying to make light of this.
Oh, no, I know.
The actual first responders meeting that occurs every week with all those involved, where, where they meet with the construction team, including the project managers, about what, what, what their concerns are. We're trying to hash out as much as we can under what we're finding out is a traffic plan that we're going to all feel comfortable about. I don't know if that's going to be 100% liking to everyone. I understand that there's going to be a lot of thought and sacrifice that's going to have to come from rearranging certain pathways. The project manager, Rod Murphy, has been meeting with your, your first responders and EMT personnel on a weekly basis. Maybe he could actually give, give a little bit of light?
A few snippets on that. Yeah, we've been meeting with first responders, which includes city of Sacramento, West Sacramento. We're planning on having, they're planning, city of West Sacramento is planning on having a dedicated police and fire dispatcher that's 24/7 dedicated just for this project. As far as freeway access, if you, in order to reduce traffic down to two lanes, we have to take a lane at a time. So there is a, going to be quite a long protected area where we're going to be having our CHP officers there, they're going to be at the closed ramps at 1116th Street. So getting to that still may be an issue, and that's going to have to be worked out with city of West Sacramento and Sacramento about how to get around the grid. But through the project, at least the good thing about the Fix 50 project is it's really 18th to 24th Street. They can get them all the way up to the, begin project construction, stop traffic, and get them through that area. So the actual 50 portion should not be as problematic, I think, as some of the city streets. And, you know, we'll be working with the city of West Sacramento, we have been working with Sacramento, on how they plan to attack. I mean, if certain, it, it's up to the cities to figure out the, the best route, but it might be the best interest if you want a dedicated route, maybe that is something the city shuts down, or at least a lane down to local traffic for emergency access. That, that's kind of the details that I was hearing the mayor speak of. You guys are very knowledgeable of your cities and your streets. We're here to let you know, we have a big project that's going to create traffic problems for all the surrounding areas, and we need you as a partner in dealing with that.
Yeah, I think, I just, I, I appreciate that, and I know our, our chief and our, both chiefs and our public works folks have been focused on this as well. I just think what, what is, what is unique about here as opposed to any of the other jurisdictions, at least as far as I can, I can think of, is, is the highly restricted set of alternatives. So it's, I mean, we're, we're, we're used to putting up with renovation and the hassles and the conveniences, because we've been renovating the whole city so much over the last 15 years. So we're used to that. And, and people are like, fine, I get it, we need, we want to be safe, we want progress, that's, that's what it takes. Well, you know, you renovate your kitchen, you put up with a hassle for a while. But the, but because there's only, so it wouldn't be so, it's not so much of an issue as it might be elsewhere, as we don't, we want, we don't want it to spill over onto, onto side streets and neighborhood streets. We don't want that, but we understand that sometimes that's the consequence. The problem is, for many of these alternative routes, there's no such thing, right? There's, there's, I mean, to get north-south in the city, other than in, you know, in a, within a couple of neighborhoods themselves, there's, there's really just South River Road, Jefferson, Harbor, and Enterprise at the very end. That's it. There's no, there's no, uh, West Acre Road is the ones, is the one local street alternative on the north-south axis. And then to connect into South Port, there's only two. And there's no side street alternative. So you can't, you can't be creative, you can't say, well, let's just put up with a little inconvenience for a while, because there's only those two. And so we, we have a, we have a real problem in addition to just a, you know, like a hassle, like your tolerance for inconvenience. That's, we, we can do, we know how to deal with that here. But we, but we do need to be able to deal with the very real issues around safety. And some of them will be getting folks to the, to the med center, and to the trauma center and all of that, but so many of them are not, right? It's just, we, we, if we can just get the, the trained firefighter, the EMT, the police officer, whoever, to that location, they can solve the problem right there, but they can't, but not if it takes 45 minutes to get, to get one mile down Jefferson. That's, that's the kind of problem that we've got to figure out how to solve together. Either get them there faster, or make sure we have the personnel to have more folks stationed in the, in, you know, distributed throughout the city. But we, I mean, we don't, we don't currently have, you know, 27 EMTs on shift at any, at any one moment to be able to handle that, so.
Mayor Protem Johannison?
Yeah, maybe just a quick follow-up on, so on, on the truck traffic, do you have an ability to reach out to trucking companies in general on this situation and create some kind of incentive or some additional communication on optimal times to move if they can, for example, so we're not having this mixture of cars and trucks concentrated during the commute hours?
Getting the information out to them has started with a lot of the, the weight scales and a lot of the larger companies, such as UPS, like you stated, since they are based out of West Sacramento. We typically have seen through our traffic operation studies that the heaviest amount of commercial traffic with these big trucks tends to be on a Wednesday and a Thursday, because they want to get to their destination before the weekends. So what we have been doing is getting out the information and trying to reach out to them about alternative routes, or what they can do as far as changing up the schedules. If they can do that, that could help with respect to having more dispersment of their shipping. Ultimately speaking, we're talking about a private industry that chooses when they want to do something, but we've asked that be considered, at least. So we've, we've reached out to a lot of the unions, truck driving companies, and some of the long haulers, to see what can be done. But then a lot of these folks are on paychecks that they're, if they have to work, they're, and they want to work, they're going to pick the days that they want to go out there and haul their, haul their loads. And we're doing our best to try to dissuade them from maybe coming through this particular corridor and see if there's an alternate route. But as you know, and what we've already presented, it's just a heck of a location.
Just one other thing, we, we've adopted an, an open data policy here in West Sacramento. I think we're the first in, in the region, but I know Sacramento is at least close, close behind us. And Waze, which is an application that's already been identified by, by you and, and others, as, as one way for folks to share information about blockages and alternatives is one, is one good way. But just as a, as a small glimmer, that, that if we maximize, we and you and Sacramento and Secog and others make more of the real-time data that we do have from all, from the signaling systems and everything else available during, you know, before and during this period, and encourage some of the, the, you know, the civic application development, the innovation hacker folks to, to start thinking about potential other solutions that could be developed on the technology side to give people more tools. It's not a solution, but it has the, it has the potential to, to contribute to making, to giving folks the ability to try to navigate the system as the, and the horror that it's going to be as best poss, as they possibly can.
If I can also make the suggestion for our city and working with you, is that I anticipate we'll get lots of questions and feedback from citizens in the next two months before this goes, even during. I'm not sure if we planned on having a, I don't see a hotline, it's for, or email boxes or whatever, where we can send information that can have, can add to the information or, or get questions. I'm just anticipating if a neighborhood starts saying, we're seeing too much impact, and we're hearing it through social media or through emails, or we can, we can direct people somewhere and get time and knowing that it gets taken care of, or at least addressed.
Yeah, we, we plan on setting up a, off the city homepage, a separate website with city-centric information, that which, which is very pertinent to residents and businesses in West Sacramento. We certainly can, can do FAQ and a, and we can set up a, a special phone number for people to call as well, so.
And I think what the mayor just suggested, though, is having real-time feedback, because people are going to be, it's going to be a, you know, trial and error. They're going to try this route on Monday, and they're going to figure out, and they're just going to run, I, I sense a lot of that will come up. So any real-time information we can get and share back and forth between Sacramento and ourselves, so that, again, there are people going to neighborhoods in Land Park and, and, in East Sacramento, or wherever, for work, and vice versa. They're coming here to go to work at UPS, or they're going here to go to work at Rayleigh Field, or wherever. So having that real-time information, like these are, you know, just having somewhere where can be dumped and maps, I'm just looking at what the mayor has up on Waze, would be really helpful. Because people are going to want, you know, they're going to go home that night and say, I, I just had a 60-minute commute, I can't do that tomorrow, so.
He said 60 minutes on
He said 60 minutes on top of your regular commute, right? All right. Anything else?
I might point out that the top section of the, the chart that we provided you, the list of items of Caltrans, included some of the items that were mentioned by the, by council members tonight, such as the use of the CHP helicopter. We are waiting until tonight to get your input on this matter, but we plan on making a formal request tomorrow of Caltrans of all those items as a first cut based upon what we know today. So a official letter will be sent out from the city requesting those items tomorrow.
Okay. All right.
And then we've come back at the March 19th meeting with an update on where we are, including the decision whether to combine the two projects. I mean, it was mentioned that City Sacramento staff felt like maybe it was important to pull the Band-Aid off all at once, but, I mean, I think a better analysis of whether those two projects should be combined is the best from a, from a traffic standpoint.
Okay. All right. Okay, so this item is, is not an actual item, but the council's seen it and provided up, some feedback on the, on the request list. And thanks to Caltrans and to Doc, and I know, and this is, I'm sure this is the best part of your job, going to around to the cities and the community, but, I mean, if we have any hope, it is, it is gonna require exactly what you've done tonight. So thank you very much for being a part of this, and look forward to the partnership to try to mitigate this to the maximum extent that we can. Thanks. All right, item, now whether the consent agenda before, which is, before us, which is items three through nine, any items to pull, or items for stuff to question or comment?
I was gonna just make a comment on item seven.
All right.
I think that's correct.
And, and, I can.
Well, item seven is consideration of names for the Pioneer Bluff Bridge Crossing and the Breitman Water Treatment Plant.
Thank you. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge both the gentlemen that are in part of this, in part of this report publicly, and, and what we're doing with this action. But just recognize George Kristoff and Mike McGowan, who are included in this, for their contributions to our city. Both meaningful projects, both meaningful people that are behind them in our community. So I just wanted to acknowledge them both publicly before we just kind of moved on to a vote, but I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you for the kind words.
And I just, and I, thank you, Mr. Ledesma, I completely, I obviously agree, but I think these are, these are both extraordinary gentlemen who've had a, a deep impact on the, on our community and its, and its success, so it's, it's about time that they, that they were honored. On item five, I just, I wanted to just, I don't have a question, just to acknowledge, I think this, this is an important step. There's a, that, that we, we go forward with this, with the work on our, on, on, item five being consideration approval of contract award with Tullian Young for Water Contract and Water Transfer Services. This is a follow-up from our workshop before, and it's really critical that we move forward with that. Right, item eight, we had a request for public comment. Item eight is consideration of the strategic plan, of the strategic plan summary and action agenda for 2014. Jeff Lyon?
Yeah, no, no, a second. I am speaking behalf of the Washington Neighborhood Group tonight. The 2014 Strategic Plan Summary and Action Agenda properly places a high priority on homeless transient public safety actions, such as, quote, "effective abatement of illegal camping activities." But the plan fails miserably by only addressing these problems in the civic center area. Why is it to only remove illegal camps in the civic center area? It appears that the mayor and council members don't like dealing with homeless criminals when they visit City Hall, but they could care less about these same problems in other areas of the city. Let's remember some of the most important elements from the Homeless Action Plan that you approved in November. Quote, "The city's primary responsibility is to protect public safety." Quote, "Public safety is a core responsibility." The plan that you adopted does not say to only protect public safety in the civic center area. In fact, we don't see anywhere in your Homeless Action Plan any reference to only addressing the homeless problems in the civic center. Please tell us that you really care about the public safety and welfare of all the residents of West Sacramento, not just the people who work or visit the civic center. How hypocritical is it when our city leaders and city staff do not want to put up with the homeless problems around City Hall, but they ignore the real areas with the most problems, namely the riverfront and the Washington neighborhood? You've got an example tonight of one of the people that sleeps in my front yard, in my neighbor's front yards. How would you like to wake up and see that guy using your front yard as a restroom? Think about it. Please continue to visit our website, www.cleanupwestsac.com.
All right, anything else? Let me just note, because we get a weekly dose of incorrect information, and this is one of them. So the strategic plan that's before us describes a prior strategy that the police department had led called Active and Secure in the West, in the civic center area, but all of the actions and milestones, the entire homeless strategy plan that's articulated in the strategic plan applies citywide to every, the civic center reference is only, is only part of the historical background with respect to a particular sub-program. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Then is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, on item seven, staff prepared a short memo in terms of the George water treatment plant.
Yes, yes. Thank you. So I'll make a motion to move the consent item, including noting the agenda item seven, the correct name that will be given to the, for the George Kristoff Water Treatment Plant. It's been moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing on that motion carries, consent agenda is adopted. Item 10 is consideration of options to fill a vacancy on the city council, and Madam, Madam Clerk is being filled in for tonight by the Assistant City Manager, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight staff is requesting direction on the process that the council wishes to use to fill the, the council seat that was vacated by Mr. Vegas on February 20th. The government code requires that the council take action to fill the vacancy within 60 days following the vacation of the seat. And the council has three basic options. The first one is to appoint a replacement for the remainder of the term previously held by Mr. Vegas, and that would be until November of 2016. The council has full discretion as to the process that it would use to fill that seat. The second option is to call for a special election, which would take place in November of 2014, and the seat would remain vacant until then. The reason the special election would, has to take place in November of 2014 is because the, the code requires that it, that it be held at the next, in combination with the next regular election, that is at least 114 days from the call of the special election. So when you do the calendar, it works out to be November. The third option is a little more complicated, but it involves the council adopting an ordinance that would allow for the filling of the seat by an appointment until a special election is held, which again would be in November of 2014. This ordinance, unless it is subsequently repealed, would set forth this methodology for the filling of all future vacancies. So if the council wishes to pursue this option, the ordinance would have to be effective, and the appointment would have to be made prior to the end of the 60-day period, which is April 21st. So in order to meet this timeline, the council would need to hold a special meeting no later than March 14th for the first reading of the ordinance, and then the second reading and adoption could be held at the council's regular meeting on March 19th. And the ordinance would take effect April 18th, and then the window for making that appointment would be April 18th to April 21st. The council could start their process in anticipation of making that appointment. Then a special meeting would have to be held in that time period in order for the council to make the, to make that actual appointment. So if the, if the council chooses option two or three, then staff will return with the resolution calling for the special election. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, and Mr. Mitchell is available to answer any of the legal questions concerning the options.
All right, are there any questions for staff at this time? Then we have one request for public comment, and it's Jeff Lyon.
I'm speaking behalf of the Washington Neighborhood Group. My neighbors and I request that the public be allowed to vote on who will fill the vacant city council seat. We want to vote our new representative into office based on the following criteria. He or she will truly listen to the citizens of West Sacramento and maintain an open-door policy, welcoming all citizens to come discuss their issues. As you recall, the Washington Neighborhood Group requested to meet with the city council members to talk about our homeless plan, and we were refused, no response. He or she will maintain that public, protecting public safety is tantamount in priority in all actions. He or she will pledge to adopt the Homeless Action Plan submitted by the Washington Neighborhood Group, which promotes compassion for the homeless who seek help while protecting public safety by enforcing the laws on our books in all parts of the city. He or she will fight against the siding of any homeless shelter or homeless service proposed to be located anywhere in the city of West Sacramento. My neighbors and I do not want to see this council appoint another career politician who could care less about the citizens of West Sacramento, and who could care less about public safety. And we certainly don't need another politician who welcomes and coddles the homeless in West Sacramento. It's time to clean house. Let's get serious.
Those are the only requests we have to speak under public comments. I'll return it to the council. Further questions or discussion or action?
If I may?
Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you. So I just want to be, be clear on, on just, maybe I got confused, and again, forgive me for being a little fuzzy today. So on the item two and three, we have to make an appointment, if we decide to make it an appointment, have to make it by April 21st. That's a 60-day, is that right? Okay, so, because when I heard you just say a minute ago, I thought, I thought you were saying something else. So that's the period we have. So we would have to, if we decided to make an appointment, we would have to get a process in place and move forward and get it done by the 21st. And then the other issue was we have to change an ordinance by the 21st. Correct?
If you want to exercise the, the option of appointing as an interim step and then filling out a special election. Right now, without any ordinance, you have two choices. You can either appoint, if you do that, that person will hold office until November 2016, or you can call a special election. You don't need to adopt an ordinance to do either of those.
Hey, I'm just, I mean, are you looking for a comment here, or is it kind of direction?
I'm gonna make a couple of comments.
I'm sorry, I was still kind of going.
Oh, okay. I thought you wanted, I thought you wanted some.
No, it was just awkward silence, that's okay. Well, well, first, and this is what I was alluding to earlier, is, is with the number of boards and commissions we have, I, the vacancy is not, to me, an option. It's just, it's just, you know, we've, this, this council, the last 15 years, has done an extraordinary job of managing our many priorities, and being present at many of these board meetings is, is critical. And while I'm, you know, ready to represent our, our community going forward, I'm, I'm also sitting here with a 100-degree temperature, trying to make sure I'm present as well. And I just want to make sure that we, so vacancy to me is not something that I desire at this point. So, you know, kind of how do we move forward is, to me, is to get, get somebody, to have a process in place where we can move forward. I, you know, I, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm pretty sure, I'm not open to an ordinance changing at this point, for two reasons. One, I just don't like the idea of changing the rules midstream and in a rushed fashion. The second thing, in timing-wise, I just don't see how we can, we can do that. We have, this council has precedence in having a good process and appointing somebody for the remainder of a term. And that's just, that's something that I think we can move forward on, I would, I would feel comfortable with. If all the things were different, I might feel differently, but just the environment we're in, there's just a lot, much going on, and I just worry about having a vacancy for too long. I mean, that's, that's my sentiment at this point. And, and it was 99.2 earlier, so it's not quite 100.
Well, thank, thank you for, thank you for being here, despite the fever. Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, yeah, I, I too don't really care to have a vacancy for a long period of time. I would prefer to really look at option three, though, because I do think that a two-year span is also a long time, and I think the people need to vote on what issues they feel are important. That's what a campaign's all about. We go out and we talk about all, various issues, whether they be schools, streets, roads, whatever it may be. And then the electorate makes the choice. And I think they do a, quite frankly, I think they do a very good job. But I personally would like to appoint someone, because we'll have at least six months, if you appoint in April, you'll have at least a six or seven months of that person helping us make the decisions that move the community forward. And, and then in the meantime, there'll be a campaign, of course, in November for, to fill the seat, and the community will make the determination at that, determination at that time. That would be my thought. But just to have somebody appointed for the full two and a half years, or whatever it is, I just think that's too long of a stretch.
Mayor Protem, Johansson.
Yeah, I think for me, it's, I mean, we had the same situation before I got on city council. Same situation when the mayor was, we had the directly elected mayor, we had the opening there, and it was, went through a whole process of going out to the community, finding folks that rented sit and running, and then it, I think it was more of an internal screening than presentations at council of folks that wanted to do this. And it seemed to work well. Wes Beers was the person that was appointed. I think his term was around the same amount of time this is. This may be a little bit longer, but not extraordinary amount longer. But, you know, I, I would agree with Mr. Kristoff that, you know, I think there's a value to being vetted through the electoral process and running a campaign and raising money and to test viability. But I think, you know, where we are right now in the city and the projects we have going, one of the things we're seeing is stability is really at a premium in West Sacramento and folks that are dealing with the city. We're seeing a lot of a new investment come in, we're seeing a lot of partnerships develop with Sacramento, and that, a lot of that depends on having stability. So we've got a lot of projects, too, that are well on their way to start. Streetcar is one example. There's been a lot of time put in the streetcar, a lot of institutional memory in that. We've got the Marriott that's potentially gonna be coming in. So I, I would, although I would like to have an ordinance, I think, you know, that may be an option, a vacancy definitely is not, because I think, you know, for one reason or another, some of us can't make a meeting, and, you know, I wanted to get in a situation where you've got a quorum issue and not be able to move business forward. I would, I would support, you know, the option, option one. It is a long term, but the fact is, when I was under the same situation, I ended up running in a campaign that came in after that, so it worked out fine. So I don't- It is a long term, but the fact is, when I was under the same situation, I ended up running in the campaign that came in after that, so it worked out fine. So I don't think it's, and there's also the cost issue, too. We haven't really talked about what the cost of a special election is. I know that was an issue back when we did this first time. I don't know, it was $40,000 or $60,000 or something like that, fairly expensive, although that doesn't itself mean that you shouldn't go to an election. It's a consideration. So, I mean, I would be supportive of the appointment. I'd like to see what the process will be and, you know, make sure we reach out to the community, make sure we vet the, have a way to vet that the potential candidate's very open, very transparent. I wouldn't want any of this thing behind the scenes and all out in the open, and I think we'll be fine that way.
Well, I actually agree with, in some ways, everything that's been said. I think I share, I think most folks, most of us share Mr. Kristoff's view around the election in a lot of contexts. We were faced with this the last time, and we made a decision to make the appointment as opposed to going directly to an election. And it was, I think that was about a 22-month or 23-month appointment. This one's 30 months. I mean, it's not a radical difference in terms of the timeframe. I would like to have the option to be able to make an appointment with a special, but I don't think I'd be supportive of an ordinance that said that we will always do that, because I think there are, we have to weigh ultimately the overall, the cost and benefits to the city. And I don't, and I think that's true, it's not just the financial cost of whatever the option is at that particular moment. So I guess I'm supportive, conceptually, of an ordinance. I'm not really supportive of doing it right now for this situation, partly for the, I'm uncomfortable when a political body at the last second starts to change, you know, adopts last-minute rules and ordinances and policies in what is, you know, a fundamentally political decision that has to get made. It's just, that doesn't seem right to me. But the compelling case over the next several months is a clear one. I mean, we've got some really complex projects that are way out of our, we're boxing way out of our class. You know, we are trying to, you know, create a streetcar, the first streetcar system in our, in our region is a gigantic lift. We're making huge progress on it, but that project depends on everyone else believing that we are unwavering in our commitment to the project, that we will do what we need to, and that we don't even think about it week to week, right? And it can't be one of those issues that we, like in some other cities, where every week the city council is debating, well, I know we voted on this last week, but I just wanted to bring it up one more time, because we have a discussion about it again. And when that happens, it's almost impossible for anyone else to make investments in your community or to do partnerships or to give you a grant because they don't know that, or to open a business because they don't know that you're going to, what you're saying today is important, is going to hold tomorrow. And that's one of the things that's made West Sacramento so competitive and so effective is that sense that when we say something, when we make a commitment in West Sacramento, you can take it to the bank. If you're a company, an investor, a government agency, a citizen, you know, a restaurant, potential restaurateur, you know that we're not going to change priorities next week or change policies next week. And it's because we've had this wonderful mix of stability and extended tenure. You know, Mr. Kristoff and I together have been here for 40 years. Most of that's Mr. Kristoff, but we've been here for 40 years. And yet, we've also had new council members almost every cycle. And so we've had a really, I think, unique mix of change and stability in the city that has refreshed what we do in the community and has kept us current and attuned to what the city's interested in while also providing that through line of continuity that is important, both to get stuff done because the projects that we do are mostly long-term projects. You know, streetcar was an idea that we hatched, you know, three or four years ago, that when it opens in 2017 or whatever, will have taken that much time to accomplish. And so I think the, so the notion that we would have a short-term person that would be here for just a few months to help us serve on all the committees and all that, I get that. That's definitely important because we need to be represented at the Yolo County Transportation District that's going to be figuring out how to use buses to solve the WX freeway problem. We need to be in all those places, and there's only, there's only four of us. Or if somebody gets the flu and we suddenly can't do our business, that's a major problem, or we have to bring them out of their deathbed to be here. Those are problems. So that's the six-month problem, for sure. So we have to fill the vacancy. But these projects require us to be able to make real commitments that are going to be durable over time, that they have to know that at least most of us will be here to fulfill what we said we were going to do, citizens be willing in the community into the future. And so for, you know, for some reason, Mr. Kristoff and I, I think, have been here for a while. We've all been here for a little while, but been here for a while. I think that a six-month appointment just doesn't accomplish that goal. And whoever it is would be dropped in and asked to start campaigning immediately. And then suddenly you have to go to your candidate interview at the Labor Council and at the Building Industry Association. You're asked to, well, you promised to do X. No, well, you promised to us that you do X. If we endorse your campaign, you're going to do this, right? And to have to manage all of that while navigating the Marriott project or the half-a-billion-dollar levy project or the massive number of new development projects that we're, you know, are starting to knock at the door, or the whole, the general plan rewrite, or the three bridges that we are in process of planning, building, and constructing. I mean, there's just, there's too many high consequence things that could go wrong if we don't deal with this one effectively. So I just think in this particular case, I wouldn't do an appointment, a short-term appointment with a special election because that's not, what the city needs, at least at this moment in this particular case, is us investing, and the community investing in somebody that can really contribute to the success of some, you know, very fragile but very critical projects for the community. But having said that, I would support at a different time, which we didn't do after the last time, you know, 10 years ago, at a different time, bringing forward an ordinance that would, that would be, you know, more thoughtful and elaborate around how we might approach these choices and give us more options the next time that we, that we're in this situation, but not in the last second. I mean, you recall that just three, the law that changed from 30 days to 60 days, because we only had 30 days before, that law was only passed in 2010, and it was not passed in order to give us time to pass, to rush through a special ordinance. That was not the purpose at all. The purpose was to avoid having to do that, having to avoid calling a special election prematurely because you couldn't get through an appointment process quickly enough. So the, this alternative of having an ordinance adopted the last moment was never anticipated when the ordinance provision was put into the law. It wasn't supposed to be something that you did at the last minute. It was supposed to be something that you did as a regular policy of your city. The only reason it's become even technically possibly possible is because the legislature, in its wisdom, extended it to 30 days to 60 days so that cities would have more time to make an appointment and not have to go through an unnecessary special election. So to me, I would support moving forward with the appointment process, with the notion of moving forward with an ordinance to guide the, to guide and give the council options into the future at an upcoming time. If we did that, well, in any event, since everyone said we should do an appointment in some form or another, I do think the general outlines of the process that we used last time is at least a place to start. And, you know, we, at the meeting that we decided that we were going to proceed with an appointment, we impaneled a subcommittee of two of us to do the paper screening because we received, I want to say 32 or 35 applications at that time, and it was just too many for the council to interview. But a subcommittee of two members of the council conducted the paper screening, and then we brought forward a small number, and I don't remember how many, Mr. Johansson, I can see he was one of them, but, you know, maybe four or five or a half a dozen finalists for an interview at the council at a relatively accelerated timeframe because we had 30 days. And the process was entirely, you can't conduct it behind closed doors, and we certainly did not, and the names were released publicly and the interviews were conducted in public as well.
That was going to be my question because I'm not quite remembering what that process was, but all the applications or names, that was public information, just, you know, that's the part that worries me. And so if we can manage to that where it's transparent, the public is aware of who's, what the process is and who is applying and, you know, how it would be appointed would be important to me.
Mr. Mayor, we could come back on the 19th with the outline of the process, and it's up to the council now if you wanted us to start advertising for the vacancy and the application.
And do you recall, or did we design a special application? Or we'd use essentially the format of the application of the Portent Commission?
I think we had a special application for it.
Did we have, like, special discretion, you know, free response narrative questions that the council came up with?
I don't recall. I don't recall.
If they got their flu shot. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it would be, it would be ideal if we could at least come to some conclusion, if we move forward with one of the appointment options with at least the outlines of what that looks like tonight so that we can start, I mean, there are members of the public who, many members of the public, I think if our preliminary inquiries are correct, that are going to have interest, and if we can signal both that this is happening and also what the basic contours of it are even before the 19th, I think it would be, it would just be helpful that folks have some sense of what, how we're going to proceed. So if we did that, I think the last time it was the, myself and the Mayor Pro Tem who were the subcommittees, so there was, it was just clear, it was just the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem as opposed to some, I didn't choose two council members to do it, and I thought that worked effectively at the time. It was Mayor Pro Tem Castillo Pearson. But if we, the two of us formed that subcommittee to help with the paper, the paper cut, and then, you know, within, I think within, you know, within some reasonable number of finalists, I think we tried to keep it to five to seven, or four to seven, something in that range.
Mr. Mayor, you have, you have two meetings in April where you could actually make the appointment if you did it at a regular meeting, be April 2nd or April 16th, because the appointment has to be made by April 21st.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think we have time to go do it that late. But at the same time, as you know from some of our external partners, they're waiting, they're waiting for, whether it's Capitol Corridor or Yolo Bus or some other agencies. So we should certainly not rush, but I don't think we need, we shouldn't be college students and wait till the last moment either, if we can move in a deliberative way. Mr. Tuttle?
If we were to pursue a subcommittee that's directed by the council, then we could work with that subcommittee in terms of an application process and get the word out that that was available prior to March 19th. Is that the direction we're getting tonight?
Well, I mean, so last time we went more quickly because we only had 30 days, I think. So we, I'm guessing, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you know, but I'm guessing that if this were that time before, we would have said on the 5th, we're going to do this appointment on the 19th, and therefore the applications are due, you know, 10 days from tomorrow, and the subcommittee does its paper review in one day, you know, early that week, and the finalists are notified that Tuesday for the meeting on the 19th. So we could go, and that was a perfectly reasonable process, and it's not, doesn't allow for a lot of time for shenanigans or, you know, anything like that. So that worked, but we could also go one additional meeting and maybe, I'm sorry, we have either option, and I'm, personally, I'm comfortable with either one. I would like to move as expeditiously as we can because there's a real need, but at the same time, we don't, we don't need to rush like our lives depended on, we can't wait one, it's not that we couldn't wait an additional two weeks if we judged that that was the right, you know, that would make for a better process, a better, more transparent, open process that would bring more folks to the table.
So you're looking at April 2nd for the appointment itself?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine with me. I mean, I think that that works. I mean, we can cover, you know, some of these other meetings, I think, that we can.
We can hold out for one month.
Yeah, I'm planning on that, but, and that's not the sole reason, I want to make that clear, is, you know, that's not the sole reason why I'm supportive of this. I think we go to the second, that gives plenty of time for the public to understand the process, for the subcommittee to be able to look through applications, and give people in the community time to actually think about whether they want to serve or not. I know, frankly, I've heard from a couple of people already who reached out and asked what we're going to do, and I say, I don't know, I'll find out Wednesday. But, you know, they might be interested, and they need to talk to their families and all that sort of work. So I think the second is a judicious amount of time.
I agree. Yeah, I think we probably didn't give enough time for people last time to actually think about, do you really want to do this? Do you want, or enough time to really, to give them the chance to scope out what it meant for their lives and to talk to their family? Whereas I think a lot of folks just, the deadline's, you know, in five days, I got to fill it out right now.
Yeah. Agreed.
Mr. Pro Tem Johansson?
Yeah, I think, you know, a lot of people that apply don't recognize the amount of time that it really does take. And I think as we reach out to let people know this appointment is going to be available, to maybe have some way to communicate, you know, what this job really means. It's not showing up at a meeting once or twice a month, but it's all the other stuff you do. It's very time-consuming, so people need to understand what they're getting into. It's a big, big commitment.
Absolutely, yes. I 100% agree with that. Okay. So then, if, it sounds like the consensus we're moving towards is a decision to appoint a replacement for the remainder of the term and to schedule that appointment for April 2nd to begin the process of notifying and opening the process of self-nominations, and that we would appoint a subcommittee of myself and the Mayor Pro Tem Johansson for the sole purpose of conducting the paper cut to get to the finalists that would be interviewed by the city, by the full council on April 2nd.
Is that a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Well, the only thing I'd like to talk to the council about is that I think it's important that you have the election in November. But I do think it's also important that we have a replacement as quickly as we can, and it looks like it's April 2nd. So I would just like to have the opportunity to vote against appoint a replacement and for the full term, and at the same time, I mean, I'd just like to have the opportunity to vote against that, if you know what I mean. I mean, it's.
Do you want to make a, do you want to move the third bullet and see if there's a second? Because if you just voted.
Well, there's not. I mean, I can hear the discussion going on, so I, I mean, you can take a roll call vote, whatever you want to do, and I just want to have the opportunity to say no.
Okay, so, okay. So why don't, can we, can we first vote then just on, essentially on the first bullet, which is to vote to appoint a replacement for the term of office? And then we can have a separate, depending on the disposition of that vote, we can vote on the April 2nd and the contours and all the other dimensions of it. Okay. So the, was there a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, that we appoint the replacement for the remainder of the term. All those in favor, please call the roll. Madam Clark?
Councilmember Kristoff?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Johansson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Yes.
Mayor Cabaldin?
Yes. So that motion carries. So then our corollary motion would be to fix the date that the council intends to make the appointment on April 2nd to begin the process of recruitment notification and to appoint the subcommittee of myself and Mayor Pro Tem Johansson to conduct a paper cut to select the finalists for interview on the 2nd.
If you make that into motion, I'll second it.
All right. Well, Mr. Kristoff's moved in.
I'll second Mr. Kristoff's motion.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
And Mayor, council, then, in terms of the announcement of, at the application and when that deadline to get applications in, would we work with the subcommittee on the details of that?
Yes. Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks.
I would only ask that there be some communication when, kind of, to the council as you're planning that, because I'm sure Mr. Kristoff and I will get questions as well. So we'd like to be able to answer what the process is.
All right, yeah.
All right, thank you. Council calendar? Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just the usual array of meetings that's on the calendar. The one that's not on there is one that was announced tonight on March 11th, the 8:30 a.m. meeting with Caltrans and the business community here at City Hall on the Fix 50. The chamber is sponsoring that particular event.
All right, any questions on the calendar? City manager reports?
Just briefly, Los Rios Community College District Deputy Chancellor John Sharp announced his retirement. He also serves on the oversight board. That's effective July 1. In regard to our water usage, which has been a major issue in the media and so on, our usage for the month of February was 15% down, so I think our outreach is beginning to work. That's the usage of February 2014 compared to February